Good evening. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Licensing Board for Monday, April 1st, 2019 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have four items on tonight's agenda, starting off with item number one is this approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of the Licensing Board dating back to March 18th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number two is a temporary Class B beer and wine license for the West Bend Public School Foundation for a summer music concert being held on June 29th, 2019, from 12 noon to 11 o'clock PM at the Regner Park Entertainment area.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number three is a temporary Class B beer and wine license for the West Bend Athletic Booster, excuse me, the West Bend West Athletic Booster Club for Chasing the Chill, being held at Marine Park Technical College in the Cafeteria, May 4th, 2019, from 10 a.m. through 11 p.m.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And item number four is approval of the operators' licenses with the list in your packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Being there, no further business before the Licensing Board. I adjourn.
Thanks, Craig. I would now like to call the Order of the Board of Public Works. We have four items on tonight's agenda, the first being the minutes from March 18th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion or changes? Alright, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Item number two is the approval of long-term stormwater maintenance agreement for Albright Free Clinic, the presentation by Max Marshall. Max?
Good evening. Thank you. Tonight, this agreement is for the Albright Free Clinic, which is at 908 West Washington Street. They did some improvement to their site by adding some onsite parking. By doing so then, impacted stormwater management of the property. They were exempt for the total suspended solids and infiltration requirement of the DNR rule, but they still had to address quantity control. So they installed stormwater facilities to do so, and this agreement is to ensure that they'll maintain those facilities to function as intended. That's an agreement that we typically have with property owners when they're issued a stormwater management permit from the city, and that's under the umbrella of the city's MS4 permit from the DNR.
Alright, thanks, Max. Anybody have any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Alright, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, award contract 19-06, water utility pavement repairs at various locations. Max again?
Thank you again. This contract is a contract that we've done annually over the past several years for the water utility. When they address repairs to their water main within street pavement, they hire somebody to patch the pavement, whether concrete or asphalt. So we do this annually to address those patches. And this year, we opened the bids on March 12, and we received two bids, which are listed in your memo. And based on past experience with TP Concrete was the low bidder, we recommend, we recommend award of contract 1906 to TP Concrete from Freedonia, Wisconsin, in the amount of $62,110, as listed in their bid, with a contingency fund of $9,300. This contingency matches the 15% total maximum that we can request under the Wisconsin statute, and that is because we would like to address as many of those patches as we can. As the year goes through, we will have more breaks and we will have more patches, so we want to provide as much funding as we can to cover those patches through the fall.
Okay, thanks, Max. Anybody have any questions, Max?
Andrew.
John? I don't know if you can answer this, Max. There is a huge difference between the other contractor. Any reason why there is such a big difference or discrepancy?
That's something that we observed in the past years. I think TP Concrete has been working a lot in the city of West Bend. They're very competitive on our contracts, so they pretty much don't have maybe the same mobilization cost as other contractors. Earlier in the year, we had asked, because the village of Sockville had mentioned how they were seeing higher prices, and they were told by contractors that there's a lot of work out there, and so that's probably why we only see two bids here, too. Everybody's busy. Maybe the second contractor just threw their hat in the bid, thinking, "If I get it, I'll make a nice profit. If I don't, I don't." So that's, that might be part of the answer.
Okay, well, we're certainly happy to have TP Concrete around to do that, so I make a motion to approve, accept the contract.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, contract 19-02, Bittersweet Drive Water Main Replacement, and contract 19-03, Green Valley Place and Edward Court Water Main Replacement. Max?
Thank you again. Those two contracts were put out to bid to replace water main in the streets that you listed for the water utility. We had, excuse me, we received the bids, three bids for contract 1902, and three bids for contract 1903. You have the listing of the bidders and the amount that they bid compared to the prebid estimate for those contracts. Unfortunately, when you look at both bids, the total is larger than what we had estimated for the budget. So at this point, we do not have enough funding to complete both contracts, so we will recommend that we award one contract and we reject the other bid in order to rebid next year. So at this point, we did some reference checking from Wood Sewer and Excavating, among other communities where they did work, because they had never worked in the city of West Bend prior. We received positive feedback from those communities, saying they would hire them back again, etc. So at this point, we would recommend that the board reject the bids for contract 1902.
And we would recommend that the board award contract 1903.
In the amount of $317,570 to Wood Sewer and Excavating at the unit prices specified in their bids, with a contingency of $16,000 for about 5% of the total bid.
Alright, thanks, Max. Anybody have any questions? Mike?
Max, the same contractor has low bids on both of those projects, and their bid on the one that we're considering awarding them is considerably less than the projected estimate. However, the one that they came in higher on was just marginally higher than our projected estimate. Is there any opportunity to negotiate because of the savings on the one project to cover that, the additional project right away with the saved funds?
Unfortunately, we are bound by the bidding process, and when we, we have to follow a certain procedure, and we can't come back and negotiate with the contractors after we open the bids. That's something against the law that we can't do. So unfortunately, we don't have that opportunity. That's the way the process is.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
And I'll make the motion to reject 1902 and accept 1903 as stated.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion is second. Any discussion? Alright, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Max.
Thank you.
And with that, I adjourn the Board of Public Works.
Thanks, Andrew. I'd like to call the Finance Committee for April 1st to order. We have four items on the agenda. Item number one is the approval of the minutes from the March 18th meeting.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion is second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the sale and appropriation of funds from sales of fire department surplus to purchase replacement fire department pagers. Presentation by Fire Chief Kudick. Good evening.
Good evening. You have before you a two-part request. The first part is to sell surplus equipment. In 2019, we were granted funds from the CIP for purchasing new self-contained breathing apparatus, or SCBA. We did find a buyer for the used ones of $3,000, so that's the first part. We'd like to sell it to that individual or to that company. And then we'd like to have that funds re-appropriated into our maintenance account so that we can buy pagers. Over the years, we've had pagers in the CIP fund that have gotten taken out pretty early in the process, so we need to replace those. If we purchase them now, we can get a good deal on them, plus a three-year warranty.
Thanks, Chief. I assume when we saw these scuba units that there get sold as-is, so they can't come back to us?
Yeah. Actually, they're just a big pile. Just come and get them as, in the big pile, so.
Alright. Yes, Chief. Yes, Mayor? Call me what you want. That sounds pretty good. The three grand buy all the pagers?
Yes. It buys us 10 of them.
Okay, good. Any other comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion is second. Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Item number three is award quote Q19-02, Construction Management and Inspection Services for Bittersweet Drive, Green Valley Place, and Edward Court Water Main Replacement Projects. Good evening, Max.
Good evening again. Thank you. So when we put out four bids, the water main construction contracts that we just discussed, we also put out quotes for consulting firms to do the inspection and contract administration on those, on those two contracts. So we requested two quotes, one for administering contract 1902, and one for administering contract 1903. So at this point, since we would expect rejection of contract 1902 and award of 1903, we would like to hire a consultant to do the inspection and contract administration on contract 1903. We received two valid proposals on March 13 from consulting firms. One was Conco Engineering Group, and the other one was Rickard Melkey. At this point, Conco Engineering Group is the low bidder on their quote, and we would recommend awarding this quote to them to do this work for contract 1903.
Thanks, Max. Any comments or questions from Max on this? If not, an entertaining motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion is second. Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Thanks, Max.
Thank you.
And item number four is a dispute of fire department hazmat invoice, presentation by Chief Kudick again. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. You have in your packet a little background as to the dispute for the invoice. Just to recap, on December of 2018, the fire department received a call from Mrs. Laporta stating she had broken a thermometer and spilled the mercury. Mrs. Laporta was advised that we could respond, or she could contact a private hazmat disposal company. She called back a few minutes later and asked us to respond. She's currently contesting the invoice based on the claim. She told me that she was not given an estimate on what the cost would be, and she believes our costs to be excessively high. Therefore, she is requesting her dispute come before the common counsel tonight. Just a little background in your packet. The first thing in your packet is the billing, billing rates that were established by council. These are from 2006 and 2005. They have not been changed since then. It gives us the authority to charge for hazmat calls. We did contact a private cleanup service after the dispute and found out that that company would charge it about $1,300 for the cleanup. The fire department has already reduced her invoice by $520 from the original invoice, and we did offer her a three-year payment plan if it creates a hardship. A couple things in your packet. The first item is the actual fire report quoting the lieutenant that was on the scene, and also the battalion chief that was on the scene. The second part of your packet contains the invoice report. That's the actual invoice that was sent to her. Third page is how we come up with those invoices. This is our typical billing sheet. If you notice on there, we charged 2.8 hours. That's the actual time we were there. The rates that we charge are the actual billing rates that come from HR. And then the truck to cost, we only did that for one hour instead of the 2.8 hours, and that's $140 that's established by the 2005, 2006 council resolution. I do have that council resolution attached, and then the last page of that is if we would charge exactly the way the resolution reads and charge for the amount of time that was out there. That includes battalion chief, 2.8 hours for battalion chief, his vehicle, and then the full 2.8 hours for the engine would have resulted in a $1,400 bill. With that, I believe Mrs. Laporta is here tonight to answer any questions, and maybe to speak if she would like, but if you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Chief before we invite Ms. Laporta? Yes, Chris?
Can I just ask, so what is the policy as far as, do you guys give estimates if residents ask, or?
No, it's all based on ours.
Yeah.
So it's really hard to tell. In this case, carpeting had to be removed and those kind of things, so.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, Ms. Laporta, did you want to come up and speak at all?
Yes.
If you could give your name and address.
Of course. My name is John Laporta. I'm the son of Diane. I was the main one involved in the incident. My mother did make the call to the fire station, but I was actually the person who broke the thermometer and was more involved in the situation. As you asked, sir, my name is John Laporta. Our address is 217 Maplewind Road, West Bend, Wisconsin, 53095. So to start off, you know, we completely agree with the chief. We think that based on their invoice that the prices are fair. We appreciate what the chief was willing to do for us on the bill. However, when we broke the thermometer, I immediately, I was very sick. I work as a roofer. I travel across the United States. I'd just gotten back of six months in Colorado, working 80-hour weeks. I'd gotten the norovirus very bad, and I broke this thermometer. When the incident happened, so I was not as mentally on top of things as I normally would have been. When I broke the thermometer and spilled mercury everywhere, I called Poison Controls. My mother called the fire department. Poison Control told me that I needed to break five times what I broke for the mercury to be of any hazard at all, and that we would have been more than capable to do the cleanup ourself. When my mother was on the phone with the fire department, she asked them, she didn't, she asked them what they would charge to come out, and the operator that she spoke to told us that they would charge us for the hazmat kit, and then his words were, he would be surprised if they charged us for anything else. This is the reason that we wanted to contest the bill tonight, not because we think the rates that are on the invoice are unfair, but because we were told on the phone that, that, again, in the operator's words, he would be surprised if anything else was charged. Now, the spill was minor enough, and Poison Control made it clear that it was not toxic enough to be of great concern, and we could have done it ourselves. However, because of what the operator told us on the phone, and because the fire department was already on their way out, we called both at the same time, we decided to not call them and let them know we didn't want them. We decided to let them come based on what the operator told us. We'd also like to add, we have nothing but appreciation and adoration for our fire department, and we, they did an excellent job, and we're very happy with their services. Again, our only dispute is because of what the operator told us very clearly on the phone is not what we found in the invoicing. We wanted to bring this to you for consideration. Thank you.
Had we known that it was more than what the operator had told us, we would have made a different decision, and we would have called them off, for sure. I did call that other company, by the way, and they had told me they only do commercial, they don't do private, so.
Thank you again. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to take them.
Any questions for, Ms. Laporta or son?
Thank you very much. Chief, question for you. If it would have been cleaned up by themselves and thrown away in the garbage, would that have followed protocol for a mercury cleanup?
It would not have followed ours. I mean, homework can do whatever they want. I'm not sure how they disposed of the carpeting and contaminants. Those were left with the occupant. We would not have been able to dispose of, we would have had to call the company and to pick up that as well, so that would have been an additional bill. We followed our protocols for the Washington County hazmat team. Once we get a mercury spill, we have mercury spill cleanup kit, but then that includes Tyvek suits, it includes cutting away carpeting, you know, those kind of things.
Correct. I mean, in your situation, if you dealt with a lot of mercury, you'd be in a bad shape, so.
Right, and we actually called.
Take every precaution to protect the.
Right. We actually called Milwaukee hazmat team as well, who advises us on a lot of those things, and they said we were handling it appropriately.
Okay. Yes, John?
I have questions for Laporta. Pardon if I, excuse me if I mispronounce your name. What made you, I want to say probably most of the households, if they did something like that, would have just picked it up, threw it in the garbage, and didn't do anything. May I ask, what made you follow through on locating hazardous, you initially called hazardous, hazardous waste placed, and they quoted you a price that you felt was pretty high, and then you contacted the fire department? What actually made you do that? Something in the, the piece of equipment that had the mercury and told you to call someone?
That's a good question. It happened in his bedroom. The mercury kind of splayed. When a thermometer breaks, it's, it's very random. It was on the bed, on his computer, on his computer chair, on the carpeting, on the curtains. It was all over. I'm, I'm a physical therapist, but I'm also a functional medicine practitioner, and I know the dangers that mercury can bring to your health, and so I was pretty concerned about it, but I didn't have, you know, I didn't know information how much mercury you had to be exposed to. He was on the phone at the same time I was. We didn't have that communication. He didn't tell me at the time, "Well, this isn't enough to really harm you." The call had already been made. So, I mean, this all happened so fast, so.
Okay, thank you.
If I could clarify that, I did tell my mom that we could have cleaned it up ourselves based on what Poison Control told us before the fire crew arrived, and because of what we were quoted by the operator at the fire department, we decided not to call them off. And I have a background, and as I mentioned before, I'm in roofing. I have a background in contracting, and I know the dangers of a lot of hazardous materials, including mercury from my work. That's why we had that concern. And also, I apologize, that's it. Thank you. Are there any other questions for us?
Mayor, did you still have a question?
Yeah, just for Chief, and I don't need to know a name, I just want to understand, do we know where the, we'd be quote surprised if they were charged anything came from, because I understand their concern if they thought they were paying for a, you know, a $128 cleanup kit. I get how getting a $1,400 or even a $900 bill would surprise you. Do we, just trying to, do we know where that came from so it doesn't happen again, regardless of the outcome here tonight?
Right. I did talk to the battalion chief, who did take the phone call, and he does not remember saying, "You'd be surprised if it only cost us the kit."
Okay.
All the battalion chiefs know the billing process. It's just a matter of how much it is and how much time it takes is what the big unknown is.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
May I, may I add? We didn't, he didn't say anything to me about what would be involved, that they would be sending several men out, that they would, you know, have these hazmat suits, that they would be, you know, we didn't know the process that was going to occur. I just really thought it'd be something simple. So, you know, I didn't have any reason to question that.
I'll just respond to that. I understand that. You also stated that it was quote everywhere. You know, you had some level of concern if it was on the drapes, on the computer, on his bed. So I guess I, number one, would applaud our staff for, I'd say, doing it the right way, and I'm thankful you didn't try and clean it up yourself, because I don't know what the Poison Control Center person, I don't know what the determination between a lot of mercury or a little bit of mercury is. I think you did the right thing in calling, and I'll applaud our staff for doing it the right way, because we'd be sitting here in a whole lot worse situation if we didn't do it the right way, and one of you two was sick from mercury poisoning. I think that would probably be a lot worse than, than the conversation we're having today. That was my only comment.
Any other comments, questions? Yes?
I'm curious, is there any precedence for anything like this? I see our council isn't here tonight to advise on this, so I have a hard time playing judge and jury on something like this without any council or any standards for what might have been done in the past. Chief, can you speak to that? Has there been considerations in the past for disputes?
Usually not in hazmat bills in this situation. Usually this is homeowner's thing, or if it's a car accident, it's the car insurance, you know, that picks up the bill for hazmat cleanup. The only thing I can compare it to would be an ambulance invoice, where occasionally we will reduce an invoice for hardship or death of somebody that then will, I do have that ability to reduce it and then bring it to council, which you guys usually approve. In this case, we have reduced it by 500.
I'll add that we've also done some payment plans in the past, like you've offered up tonight as well, Mike.
There's no other comments or questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Justice?
I mean, I, how do we feel about possibly reducing the bill more? I mean, is that something we can talk about, or? Chief, you said you brought it down 500 bucks already. Is there any kind of magic math you can do to bring it down any further for them, or?
Just the math that I use was I took off the battalion chief and the vehicle, his vehicle, so that reduced it. And then also, instead of charging him 2.8 hours for the engine, I just charged him for the engine being on scene for one hour. That was the magical math.
Sure, sure.
Okay. Where we've had to be careful in the past, as if we start to do that.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
There's no other comments, questions? An entertaining motion on the item.
I'm going to make a motion to deny, and I want to give a reason why. I compliment you for doing what you did. You did it the proper way, but if you would have had a fire, the fire department is going to be needed, or your house is going to be destroyed. You did this in order to prevent any injury to you or your son, and I think that that is more important than what we're looking at here. I'm sure that the cost probably may be a little difficult, but since there is a payment plan here, I think that something has to be done, because there were people that were involved in, that get paid. There was vehicles used, and, and obviously, the disposal of the stuff. So my feelings are, if something like that happens, the result is to clean it up, or something that needs to be done to do it right, there will be a charge, and I guess we have to accept it. So that's the reason why I'm going to deny it, is because we had some employees involved, and it was. and it was done properly. So my request is to deny it.
I have a motion and a second to deny and keep the invoice as is. Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. This is coming up just in front of the Finance Committee. It will come up again, I believe, in the common council, so.
May I ask, as a citizen, please, that it wasn't an emergent situation? That when I was on the phone with the dispatcher, I think it would be good in the future if the dispatchers are trained to let the homeowners know what's going to be involved? Because we would have made a different decision. So even just to hopefully prevent this from happening in the future, because this is a huge bill for us. So thank you for considering.
I appreciate that, and we'll take that under consideration as well. Being no further business for the Finance Committee, I adjourn.
Thanks, Rich. Let's call the City of West Bend Common Council for Monday, April 1st, 2019, to order and recognize that all eight aldermen are here and accounted for this evening. We're missing our city attorney, so things should go along pretty smoothly tonight, I think. Item number one is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of March 18th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Three none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Items two through nine are on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number 10 is Fire Department Memorandum of Agreement with Marine Park Technical College Regarding Clinical Education and Presentation by Chief Kudak.
What you have before you is a MOU or MOA for, with Marine Park College, what we do is we proctor their EMT basic students and their EMT paramedic students. This is kind of a house cleaning thing. They have new administration over there. We've had one in the past. They rewrote it. It's not at all similar to what we had, but it does cover the bases and was also approved by the city attorney.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions for the chief?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Thank you.
That motion carries. Item number 11 is the Laporta dispute of Fire Department hazmat invoice.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. And just to clarify, John, am I correct in assuming that it's the reduced bill with the payment plan option if they so choose? Is that what?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Great. Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Three none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Thanks for coming out tonight, guys. Item number 12, annexing Town of Trenton Territory, a 62.7 acre parcel of land located approximately one and one-half, excuse me, one-half miles, one-half mile, south of Rusko Road and east of South River Road, known as the Schmidt Lands, in a presentation tonight by Community Development Director?
Close enough.
Mark Petrovich. Good evening, Mark. Department of Development Director.
Thank you. These are two parcels on the east side of River Road, directly adjacent and opposite the River Road Industrial Park. They're vacant parcels currently in agricultural use. They're well-suited for in the M2 industrial temporary zoning that we have requested in the ordinance. This is a result of a direct petition by the current owners. There are no residents, no structures on this site. The property can be served by City Municipal Sewer and Water, and it is currently already recommended for industrial use under both the counties and the town comprehensive plan. So we would amend our plan subsequent to the annexation to make it consistent and allow the M2 zoning. This, the use has been recommended by the City Plan Commission, and it was also found to be in the public interest by the Department Administration. So we'd recommend approval of the ordinance with the temporary M2 zoning.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions for Mark? Yes?
I had a question, just gloating. I'm excited for District Four to have, what is it, 62 more acres added to it? So with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Chris, you have no voters in there yet. It's 62 vacant acres of property. Don't get too excited yet. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations to the Schmidt folks.
Thank you.
Item 13 is an ordinance amending Section 1, oop, this is one, item 13, we're actually tabling until next meeting, until the chief is back in town. All right, Rich?
Yes, sir.
All right. Item 14 is an ordinance amending Section 3.12 of the municipal code entitled Debt Management Policy. Jay, are you leading us through this?
Yeah, this has been before you in the past. Last time we did a financial presentation, the biggest change to this section is the percentage of debt limit. Paragraph two states the percentage of debt limit to general obligation debt shall be 10% below the median calculation by Baker Tilly during the annual audit. This is a measure that we receive on an annual basis and is being proposed to at the 10% below. So currently, that number is about 40%. 10% below would be 36%. We're very close to obtaining that, but that number does move up and down as the other municipalities borrow more or less. So that's the significant change in this, another just measure to control spending and put caps in place to be cautious regarding our future debt in the City of West Bend.
Thanks, Jay. At the same time, it doesn't limit us to modify that number, it just takes public action to do so. So it's really, I guess, solidifying the milestone of the debt reduction that we've done in the recent past here and making sure that we and future councils think long and hard about superseding that debt. Again, it doesn't limit that from happening whatsoever, but it just means public discussion will take place before we get deep into debt again.
Yep. If Ian were here, he would say that no current council can bind a future council, so that is absolutely true, Mayor. And the last sentence of that paragraph two states that a full, super majority vote of the full council is necessary to exceed. So if we were to engage in a new TIF somewhere or pursue some other type of borrowing, the council, the current council at that time by super majority vote would have the opportunity to override this.
Any other questions or comments?
Can we send a copy of it to Moody's?
That word again.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And just one more quick congratulations to this council and staff and previous councils for getting to the point and having the open discussion that we're really taking debt management seriously. We have taken it seriously, and hopefully this communicates to future councils to think twice before we dive into debt. Item 15 is report by Alderman Hugaster regarding the Park Rec Commission Meeting. Steve?
We met on March 28th. Pretty much a short meeting. We had a request, Historic Barton Business Association, to do some work up on the riverfront Parkway Upper Overlook Bluff, is what they're calling it right now.
Changing the name is one thing.
Well, that's, they're working on that. They'll be putting a flagpole in there and some landscaping and some granite pavers, et cetera. And they are looking to change the name of the park, and that is still being under consideration. We're looking for a dog ordinance change to allow dogs on the River Walk. It's going to be a one-year trial to start with, but right now, we're looking at Ridge Run Park, the entire park, Glacier Blue Hills Recreation Ice Age Trail only, the West Bend River Walk sidewalk trail portion only, Old Settlers Park, the entire park, and the Best Park, Best Pocket Park, the sidewalk portion only. And the Parks Department would be signing to where the dogs can be and where they can't be. So that'll be coming up, I think he said, on the 15th. We've got some baseball tournaments coming to town, the Nitro Tournaments on June 21st to the 23rd and July 19th to the 21st, Little League Fathers' Day Tournament, June 16th, 14th to the 16th, they've got 72 teams coming. Little League Lightning Tournament, June 7th to the 9th, they have 50 teams coming, so there's going to be a lot of people in West Bend. We accepted donations for the Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids, a total of $8,500 from Aztec Systems Incorporated, West Bend Community Foundation from West Bend Mutual, GW Speaker, Killian Management Services, Children's Hospital of Wisconsin, and the Educator Credit Union. And so far, in 28 days, we're up to 665 registrations already. They're looking at putting two new dog shelters, two shelters in the dog park, some events coming up on the 13th, kids fishing at Regner Park, Easter egg hunt at Regner Park. And the last thing was the deer management. It's winding down. I'm not sure when the end is going to be. The last number we had was 44 deer. That's about it.
Thanks, Steve. I think that, is the deer done? We're done with deer and the number is 56? So pretty close to the 60. Good job, John and the rest of the gang. I assume we'll get a report in the near future on potential future years? Super. And then Steve or Jay, I believe, any dog ordinance modifications come before the council as well?
Yeah, they're coming on the 15th.
Oh, it's coming here on the 15th. Gotcha.
That's what I heard, I'm sorry.
Any other questions for Steve? Okay, then item number 16 is entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to State Statute Section 19.85, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This is regarding a, regarding considering the purchasing of land. I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Sorry, again.
Motion has been made and seconded. Stephanie, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Butch Look?
Aye.
Alderman Christian?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Casten?
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Kissed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, and we will be adjourning from closed session, so have a great evening,